7:30, and let's get started. The board is ready to go. I'd like to call to order the July 16, 2020, meeting of the Village of Cold Spring Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm Aaron Wolf, I'm the Chair at the ZBA, and also present by video we have Eric Worth, Donald McDonough, Laura Bozzi. John Martin is absent at the moment, and he may show up later. Board members are unpaid volunteers, we're residents of the Village of Cold Spring, and we are appointed by the Board of Trustees. We've got Michael Mel, who is here as the Cold Spring viewer, and he is our Board Secretary and Zoom master, as well as generally the videographer of Village meetings. We've got, the ZBA has two primary roles in the Village, and I'm going to talk about this a little bit later in my remarks. We grant or deny variances to the code when requested by property owners. That is the bulk of our work. We also interpret Village zoning code when there's a subjective difference opinion about the Village code between the building department and a property owner or other applicant. So on tonight's agenda, we've got some remarks about our last meeting and answers to comments that came up during that meeting. I'm going to start with that, and then we will have any comment or discussion from the board on those points. Then we're going to review our minutes from last week, and also, I think we can vote on the February 20 minutes that we're waiting on feedback from the applicant Sam Bro at 21 Parsonage. After that, we'll do the public hearing for Two Locust Ridge, and following that, the workshop for 53 Parrot Street. So I imagine it's going to be at least 30 minutes before we get to 53 Parrot Street for Karen and Maria. If you want to step away, we won't start without you, should we get there a little early. Okay, so I want to start with some remarks about our last meeting. First, I want to thank the board for working through that meeting. It was our first Zoom meeting, and we did handle it rather professionally in light of the meeting itself. I think some of us in work or personal Zoom meetings are used to a little bit of a free-for-all when it comes to group video meetings. And in general, the ZBA has been very flexible in our discussions with applicants in the public in-person, at our in-person meetings. I'm going to try to maintain that as much as we can while still being able to hear everyone as we continue to meet on Zoom, which as far as I know, we are going to do for the future. So a couple of questions that came up. First, there was the matter of precedent and how that applied to the application. When the ZBA is hearing a request to interpret the code, which we have never done since I've been on the board for four years, I don't know, Donald, if you've had any code interpretation applications. But during an interpretation, the board sets a precedent pretty much explicitly, and those precedents should be followed for all future cases involving the code in question. But when we are hearing a request to grant variances, we are looking at unique properties and setting a precedent only to the degree that attributes of those properties exist on other properties that may request a variance in the future. An easy example of that is our general precedent for granting six-foot fence variances on boundaries between the R1 and B1 districts. Next, I looked into the question of whether we could have held the 192 Main Street public hearing at a sooner date, and the short answer is no. The last meeting that we had before the mayor canceled all board meetings, our last meeting was on 3/8, March 8, he canceled them on 3/13, and we did not meet in May or April because of that cancellation. On June 2, the Village Board announced that meetings would resume when Phase 2, as deemed by New York State, came into play for Phase 2 reopening. That began on June 9. Our meetings are officially scheduled on the first and third Thursdays of the month. The next scheduled ZBA meeting would have been June 18. However, because state regulations require that new notices were to be sent out because of the meeting location change from in-person to Zoom, there was not enough time to legally comply with our Village notice regulations to continue the 192 Main public hearing on 6/18. So with no other business at that meeting, we canceled the meeting on 6/18. We did not receive any requests by the applicant, or their architects, or anybody else to try to arrange a special meeting to make the hearing happen earlier. And that's generally difficult to do because the board depends on support staff like Michael Mel and Jeff in the office. But I am sure that had that request been made, we would have tried to accommodate the request to hold it earlier. So we did re-notice it as soon as possible, and we held the public hearing at our next scheduled meeting on July 2, which was two weeks ago. Then I also looked into our allowed timeline for making a decision, and according to state law, after closing a public hearing, we do have 62 days to make a decision. So we did make our decision the same night as the public hearing and when we closed it, but had we waited until our next meeting, we would have been well within the allowed deadline to do so. So those are my comments regarding our zoning board for our zoning board meeting and the public hearing for last week. Does anybody from the board have any questions or comments? And I would encourage you to look into this yourselves if you want to get deeper into it also. Okay. Would anybody from the public like to comment on my remarks? Donald, if you're talking, you're muted. Still muted. There you go.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
I agree with your comments, and I'm glad you did the research. I think we all knew that during the meeting, or what you're saying, and I think the meeting was very upsetting and very unfortunate, and I hope we don't have another one like that.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board or the public on those remarks? Okay, then let's move on to a review of minutes. So we've got the February 20 minutes. This was the meeting was primarily about 21 Parsonage Street, so Donald led that meeting, and we had decided at our July 2 meeting that we would give the applicant a chance to review those in case there was any feedback from the applicant. We've received no feedback from the applicant, and Donald, I think you can...
I received feedback. He reviewed the minutes, and he was fine with the minutes I've written.
Okay, great. So I only have one outstanding thing here, which was a sentence that you were going to work on. It said, this is in, it's on page 2, near the bottom, it says, "First expressed his opinion that the lot was created by an informal private agreement." And I think you wanted to add something to that sentence or to change it.
Yeah, and I completely forgot that I was supposed to do that, and I haven't done anything on it. That was the honest answer. Sorry.
Okay. Would you like, is that something that you would like to take a moment to do now? Or...
Well, it's okay, you know. The applicant has no objection with it, and, you know, I think it's okay for what it is, so I would not, I'd rather just move on.
Okay. Laura or Eric, do you have any further comments about these minutes?
I do not.
Great. So if one of you would make a motion and another one would second, we can approve these.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written. Rule 7.2, 2020.
In a second.
Just as long as that assumes taking out the highlighting and the, Donald, to finish the sentence.
Yes.
Yeah. With those corrections, I second.
Are we talking about the minutes? Donald referred to the minutes of 7:2. Is that what we're talking about?
2:20.
Oh, you're on, oh. Sorry.
So the motion concerns the minutes of 2:20.
That's right.
All right. I was up within the wrong minutes.
Fine with them as they were corrected at our last meeting.
Okay. So we've got a motion. In a second, I think, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. So I will finish those and send them to Jeff for the website. The next minutes are from 2:20. I'm sorry, 7:2.
I have a question about them. At the end, it just says that we reviewed the five area variance criteria and made a motion to grant the waivers, and there's no detail that, of course, is in the other document that we prepared, but does, is it typical to not spell out our discussion in that, during that, that part of the meeting?
We have had that in the past where the discussion was listed there or the important points of it, and we switched to not having that in order to let the resolution be the official version of our discussion. And the thought is that that would reduce any discrepancies that might confuse later readers.
Okay, as long as that's consistent, that makes sense to me. It's fine.
Yeah, we could certainly revisit that if you think we need to.
I have a question on page 1, under "Discussion of Digital Applications." It says, "Current application requires three hard copies of all materials." Is that correct? I thought it was eight.
It is eight. So I will change that. I'm going to change waivers to variances in the first board list under the public hearing. And we should update the applicant because both Jen and John were listed on the application. And then I'll make applicants' plural wherever I see it.
So we're considering these minutes for two weeks ago?
Yes. That's, I'm just reading through them.
Thank you. I'm okay.
You're okay? Okay.
I have nothing else.
There's a lot of stuff in there, but I don't, it's a good representation of the meeting, from what I can say.
I have nothing else to say about them.
Neither do I.
Okay. I'm just going to finish scanning. I guess I would say, in your Mark Roebom's public comment, where it says the current design makes the most sense, I think he means that the design as presented as opposed to the existing shed. So I will change that to the design presented in the application. Okay, I'm done. I will make a motion to approve the minutes of 7:2, 2020, as amended. Can I have a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. So minutes are approved. Our next item on the agenda is the public hearing for Two Locust Ridge. So the materials for this are located on the Village website, and if there's anybody who doesn't have a link to that, you can find it from the zoning board page on the Village website, and then go to the current applications page. And let me find it on my local... Oh, here it is. Okay. So let's open the public hearing. This is a public hearing for Two Locust Ridge, application by John Hedlund and Kathleen Foley for side yard variance of eight feet to place a shed in their backyard. Kathleen or John, you can unmute and present the application, and then we will ask questions and take comment from the public. I did review the notification receipts for the mail notices to neighbors, and those are all in order. And he signed, the public hearing signed affidavit has been delivered. So we're all set to go as far as paperwork concerns.
Thank you, Aaron. Before I talk about the application, I want to make sure that board members know, one of the neighbors pointed out that the elevation and images of the shed itself had not been included, so I did contact Jeff late in the day at around 4 o'clock, and he did add those, which had been submitted as part of the original application, but for whatever reason, they didn't get uploaded to the Village website. I think he's, we're all trying to feel out in this Zoom world how it is that we make documents available to the public, but he did add it. So if you need to see an image of the spec sheet or a photograph of the shed, it's now up on the Village website. So we have a small yard with no driveway, which we're just fine with, but we do have children who are, have bicycles, and they are growing, and the bicycles are becoming large enough that they are consuming our porch, and we like to say we look a little bit like the Clampets with all the gear on the porch. So we would like to install a 4x8 shed in the backyard. It has limited visibility from any public right-of-way, and I think limited visibility from most neighbors because it is tucked in a back corner. We do have a six-foot fence in the back for which we do have a variance on record, and it may be visible from next door, from 224 Main, from upper windows, but we hope that we've chosen something that's sensitive and simple for the backyard. We also currently have all of our yard gear in the basement, and so we're carrying a lawn mower up and down the steps from a Bilko door, which is fine for John, but I can't do it without help, so it'd be much easier to be able to have the lawn mower in the backyard. We went as minimally, as minimal in size as we could to accommodate our need, 8x4. It does, we have sufficient room in the back because our property does drop off on the front and the back slope. We are literally the ridge of Locust Ridge, so we don't have a rear yard setback issue, but we would like to put it up against our fence to maximize available usable backyard space, and that does cut into the side yard variance. However, the side yard on that side, I think you'll be able to see in the photographs that are on the Village website, there is a tall hedge on the opposite, well, first of all, because so many of these yards are graded around the village, our next-door neighbor, the Shields at number 4 Locust Ridge, their yard is raised above ours, and then on the Main Street side, 224 Main, our yard is raised above theirs, so there are modified grades already. And the Shields have on their grade above our backyard an additional very tall hedge that probably goes two or three feet above our six-foot fence.
Yes.
So there's very limited visibility. The fence, sorry, the shed has a shed roof. It's taller in the back than it is in the front. It's an eight-foot tall roof at the back and seven at the front, so there will be some visibility from Cedar Street, and we have already had the approval of the Historic District Review Board, and of course, we took in mind considerations that the design and placement should be sensitive to those considerations as well. Is there anything else I can add, Aaron, that would be useful? I think you're muted still.
I don't think so. This is a pretty clear-cut case for me, and I've already reviewed all of the application.
I should add that the foundation, excuse me, the foundation, we are not digging a foundation for the shed, it's an on-grade installation that's removable, so it's not a permanent. John Martin asked, last time we were together and you all were determining readiness for a public hearing, John asked whether we intended that this variance should travel with the property. It is not a permanent installation, so it can be taken down, and there is no excavation involved.
Right. I'm not aware of a way to take away a variance, though, once it's granted, so I think that...
All true.
He was, he was just saying, is there going to be a bunch of concrete there that will be hard to remove or not?
No, it's the answer. No. But interestingly, we did, there is a chunk of very substantial concrete there. We had, the kids had a sandbox there when they were little, and it looked structural. And so I asked our neighbor, Mr. Shields, who bought the house next door in 1968, and he, his house was built by the gentleman who owned the lumberyard, when the lumberyard was in business here in the village. And there was, on that portion of our property that crossed over the property line, there was a large stone barbecue, an outdoor fireplace that straddled, somehow straddled the property line. I haven't quite figured out how, but there is the remnants of that, which is kind of cool, little bit of Cold Spring history. The way it's cobbled together, it makes me, you know, the type of stones that are there, I think it might be one of the, you know, the cobblestones that we see around the village are very typical of the, I'll come to me eventually, the Stonemason family. There's a number of their works around the village, and I think the stone fireplace may have been there. The Eagle on B Street, Donald, your street, and there's a couple of retaining walls around the village that have that cobblestone construction, so I think it may be that family's handiwork.
So as a, the flip side of the variance sticking with the property is that we grant it for the specific location where you, where you're telling us you want it, and I'm sure you thought that through carefully, but it's only for that exact spot.
It's kind of the least, the location of least impact for others and for us.
Do we have any questions from the board? No questions?
Rodino, sorry, the Rodinos were the Masons.
We'll be sure to get that in the minutes.
Okay, yeah, make sure the record reflects.
Would anybody from the public like to speak? I think we've got at least one or two people here. Anybody? I can't see, those of you with your video off, I can't see if you're trying to talk while you're muted. I'm going to assume that...
No one has, no one has raised their hands.
Okay. I'm assuming that nobody else would like to speak, and unless there's any more discussion or questions from the board, we can close the public hearing. Nope. Somebody like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing.
I second.
All in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I would like to suggest that for this one, we quickly go through the five criteria for an area variance and get this done quickly. Anybody want to change the plan there? Nope. All right. So, I'll make this bigger so I can read it. Number one, the benefit sought by the applicant can or cannot be achieved by any other feasible means. I will say cannot, and I think the major factor here is that the slope of the rear yard really prevents the applicants from putting anything there that's pretty much unusable, as far as I can tell, you know, when it comes to placing the building. Donald?
Agreed.
Laura?
I agree.
Eric?
Well, would it not be feasible to place the shed within... Well, would it not be feasible to place the shed within the setbacks, I mean, outside the setbacks?
I, I think we can say that it would be feasible by, by the strict definition that reduces the benefit sought by the applicant. But I will note your, your comment, of course. Does that cover your, your concern, Erin?
I guess it just, that hinges on the question of what is meant by benefit here. If benefit is to have a shed to store bicycles and so on, I guess I would have to say technically it could be achieved by other means.
May I, through you, Chair?
I think we would just like to continue.
Or let us know if there's a time at which it's appropriate for us to comment.
Okay, thanks.
Which is, is not to say that the alternative methods are better or even as good, but taking feasible to simply mean possible, seems like there is a possible alternative.
Possible alternative to the entire backyard.
Yeah, I, I feel like the first, the first part of the sentence, whether the benefit sought by the applicant, I think that the benefit is a, a place to store materials in a way that maintains the use of the yard. And so maybe there are other, there may be other places to put the shed, but I think like in the middle of the yard reduces, is, is not the benefit that's sought.
Okay, any more discussion on this one? Two, the proposed variance will or will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and a detriment to nearby properties will or will not be created by the granting of the variance. Laura, do you want to go ahead?
I, I don't think it will produce an undesirable change, particularly because of the, the height of the fence and the hedge that, that's behind the, that's behind the shed so that it's, it's tucked in.
Erin?
I agree. No, no undesirable change.
Donald?
The proposal is modest and economical in size to, to achieve the benefits sought by the applicant and they placed it in a position which will not in any way make an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby property.
Thank you. I agree and I would add that we did not hear anything either way from the neighbors. So, and I think we have one neighbor listening. Am I right? Kathleen, do we have one of your neighbors thumbs up, thumbs down?
Yes, in fact, Mr. Hoffman is here.
Thank you.
I think our comments could also apply to the third criteria as well.
Is or is not substantial? Okay, next one, the required variance is or is not substantial. Donald, you're saying it's modest and economical, so, sorry, I've got a horn honking outside. So I'm going to assume to me it's not substantial. I will agree. Erin?
I agree, it's not substantial.
And Laura?
I agree.
Okay, next, the proposed variance will or will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Erin?
No adverse effects.
Laura?
I agree particularly given there's no, what's the word for that, foundation to the structure.
What are you saying about the structure?
There's no foundation. So there, it's, it's, you know, there's no.
Even if they were putting a foundation in, it wouldn't matter in terms of the impact on the neighborhood.
Oh, I was, I thought we were discussing the physical or environmental conditions.
We are.
The reason I'm bringing that up is because when the Foley headlands leave that house and sell it, the new owner has the perfect right to build, even if they're sent with them to their next destination, the new owner has the perfect right to build a shed that size in that location and.
With a foundation.
And it wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't matter.
And, and they could install a foundation? Is that, is that what you're saying? Yeah, okay. That's a good point. So I think it's fine to leave that out.
Okay, I'll remove your comment about the foundation. Laura, do you want me to remove your comment about the foundation?
That's fine. Yeah, thanks, Erin.
Donald, will or will not?
Well, for the reasons that we've already, you know, stated for others, if we have to do with the neighborhood.
I agree that it will not. Next, the alleged difficulty necessitating variance was or was not self-created. I will say, this is, this is a case where the actual physical characteristics of the property make it lean toward was not self-created because a shed of this size could fit into a normal rear yard. So I'm going to say was, I'm going to say was, but barely, if that's an official, official way to state this, because of the scope of the rear yard where it would naturally go. Erin?
I would say that it was self-created.
Donald?
I would say that it's not self-created for the reasons that Erin said.
I think it was self-created.
So now we are on a balance, I'm sure a balancing statement unless there's any discussion by the board. Kathleen, do you have any, did you want to add something else or did we cover?
Closed, isn't it?
It is, she asked if she, if she could make comment at one point and I want to see if she still has that comment.
I actually don't remember what the comment was, but I would agree that it's self-created. We're deciding to put the shed where it is.
Great. Okay, so. On balance, I think we can say that the, there isn't really a great other feasible place for the shed. There's not going to be any kind of change in the character of the neighborhood or neighboring, detriment to neighboring properties, especially because of the height of the fence and the large hedge on that side. Additionally, we did not hear from any neighbors, one way or the other. We agreed that it's not a substantial request and it will not have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. We did have small variance of opinion on whether it was self-created, but that is not a determining factor in our decisions either way. Would anybody like to add anything else to that balancing summary? I don't think we have any additional conditions except that, that certificate of appropriateness, which I think has already been issued, is necessary for building permit. So if somebody would like to make a motion to approve resolution 032020, granting the eight foot side yard variance for a shed, then we can take a vote.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution as stated by the chair.
I second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? No, and John Martin is absent. So Kathleen and John, the next step is, I will write this up, send it to Jeff. He will issue the building permit. When you get that, you can publish it.
Awesome. Thanks so much, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night.
I appreciate you guys' work.
Absolutely.
Thanks. Okay. So rolling right along, next on our agenda, we have a workshop for 53 Parrot Street. This is for construction of a ramp and an extension or a small increase in size of the, of a deck. And Karen and/or Maria are going to explain this to us. The purpose of the workshops is simply to make sure that the application is in order so we can schedule a public hearing. We don't really get into the merits of the application one way or the other. So Karen or Maria, take it away.
Hi, everybody. I'm Karen Parks and the homeowner Maria Ricapido is also here. So Erin, are you guys looking at the plans yourself or should we do a screen share? Or how would you like to do that? Or do you just want me to verbally explain what we're doing?
I think that looking at the plans in this case would be helpful. When I go by the property, it's kind of, if, assuming I'm looking at the right property, I'm kind of trying to imagine where it goes and I'd like to see if my idea lines up with.
Okay, so I'll do the screen share then?
Yeah, Michael, can, can you let Karen share her screen?
It is already done.
Okay, on my computer, it said host disabled participant screen sharing.
Try it again.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, so again, I'm Karen Parks and I'm here with Maria Ricapido, who is the homeowner at 53 Parrot Street. And the proposal before you is for a side yard setback variance. And what we're proposing to do is construct an exterior ramp that would allow an accessible ramp access to the first floor interior habitable space of the dwelling.
I'm not seeing anything yet. Are you sharing?
I am. Can anyone else see it?
I can see it.
Am I got this right? That I don't see this in the packet. It's only on the.
I don't, I don't think, I submitted everything digitally to the, to the Village Hall, but I think the packet that, the digital packet that was on the website toward the end of the day today, I did not see the plans in that. I just saw the, the application and the deed and the, you know, kind of the written paperwork. So.
It's a.
All right.
Okay. So the, the survey is included in the packet, but the site plan is based on the survey and just to orient us, Parrot Street is along here. And when I screen share, are you able to see me pointing?
Yes.
Okay. So Parrot Street's here, the front property line, and then the two side property lines are shown. And the, the rear property line is not shown because it's just off the page in order to fit on 11 by 17 sheet, but you can see the rear setback line here. So the rear property line is 20 feet beyond that. There are no structures or anything within that rear property setback. So the proposal is to construct a, again, a ramp that will access the, the first floor of the dwelling space to provide an accessible access route. Our proposal is to, to come on the side of the dwelling and access a back deck which currently exists. We will be raising the floor level of the existing deck. Right now, the deck sits approximately seven and a half inches below the first floor of the dwelling. So we will be raising that deck floor levels approximately seven and a half inches and then bringing the deck up from the driveway area to meet the back deck. The driveway, what I've shown is kind of a limit line to maintain two full parking spaces. So we aren't, you know, requesting a variance for parking. So we have two 18 foot long by at least nine feet wide or just shy of nine feet, I think, on the inside, but that's the existing driveway. So I think it probably is close to nine feet, the required dimensions for the parking spaces. So this limit line is kind of as far as we could go with the ramp to maintain our two parking spaces. Right now, the building, the wall of the, the dwelling sits approximately on the side yard setback line. The front corner of the house is 10.1 feet from the property line and the rear corner of the dwelling is 10.4 feet from the property line. The survey did not indicate the setback from the enclosed porch to the property line. So the proposed deck, or the proposed ramp rather, will end up being at its closest 5.75 feet from the property line. And the existing deck kind of ends here, but to maintain the width of the ramp that we're proposing, there's a small extension of the existing deck so that when the ramp comes up, it has a landing area. So at that closest point, we're at 6.2 feet to the property line. So again, this corner is the closest point to the property line, which is 5.7 feet, which is defining our requested variance of 4.25 feet to the property line. So the existing, again, the existing plan, we have our driveway with our two cars, the side yard and the existing deck located at the back of the house currently has a stair down this side of the, of the deck to the grade. So that will be eliminated and then the ramp will come up this side of the house. And again, this deck will be extended, I think it was one foot eight inches, I'll show you that on the proposed plan, to meet the width of the ramp. This stair was shown on the survey. It no longer exists. It was removed due to both disrepair and also lack of use. It actually. It actually accessed a door that went directly into the porch, which wasn't used. There were two, two doors and since this one was the primary door of use, this door was eliminated and the stair is no longer there. The existing side elevation of the house, again, Parrot Street is out here, you have your driveway, and then as you walk down the side of the house, you have the existing stair going up to the deck. So the proposed plan again will maintain two 18-foot long parking spaces. And then the ramp construction would begin. And because it's a rather lengthy ramp, we have positioned a landing at the middle of the ramp, so we go up approximately, we have a 17-foot ramp, a five-foot landing just to break up the length of the ramp. And then another 18-foot ramp to meet the existing deck. Because our existing stair down is now being replaced by the ramp, we're adding a new stair off of the back of the deck, which is within the allowable setback, so there's no variance required for that. The deck extension is one one foot eight inches. So this is the area where the deck would be extended technically here to meet the ramp. We're also adding a proposed basement Bilco access, which again does not require a variance. It's all within the allowable yard area. Okay, so the side elevation with the proposed ramp, again, where this line represents the limit line to maintain two parking spaces to the road. And then again, we have a 17-foot length of ramp with a landing and then an 18-foot length of ramp to meet the deck. The deck level again is coming up seven and a half inches so that we're approximately level with the first floor of the interior dwelling, of the dwelling. Do you think that basically describes the project? If there are any questions?
It seems to me it might help your presentation at the public hearing if you would explain why the ramp could not be built on the other side of the house.
That's what I was hoping to hear at the presentation, not tonight.
Okay. Sure, I, yep, we can do that.
Just, I'm looking at Google Maps, the satellite image. This is the house just to the northwest of the house with the above-ground pool.
Maria, would you be able to answer that? I don't know where a pool exists.
There is an above-ground pool next door to me at the Robinsons'.
So you're the fourth house in from Bank Street?
Let me just think, one, two, three, yes, I'm the fourth in up from Bank Street on, I don't know, I guess it was the west side of, the sort of west side of the street?
Yeah, west southwest. Got it. Okay, thank you. So the variance that you've applied for seems to be correct. And that is for variance of four and a quarter feet. And that will cover the length of the ramp and then the small extra part of the deck. And I agree that there are no other variances needed there, so we've got the right variance listed. Looking at the neighboring properties, you're going the two adjacent and the two across the street? And then the two behind?
Yeah, there were, I think a total of, actually, let me just pull that up. So these were the neighbors on the list. This obvious.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not coming up.
Oh, okay. Okay, hold on one moment and I'll just Okay, is it visible now?
Yes.
Okay. So these were the neighbors that were listed in the application in the property.
And that's flipped.
This is Bank Street and Parrot.
Yeah, so that's north is south in this one.
Yeah, sorry, it's, yeah.
Okay, that, that looks good to me. Does anybody think we should add any other houses? I mean, the only one I could possibly imagine would be 33. Not the street number, but the lot number. Can I see it?
Doesn't this qualify for the small lot exception in terms of the side yard setback? You get seven and a half feet as opposed to 10 feet?
Are you, you're asking the other board members, Donald? I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I'm looking at the code and it says a lot is less than 60 feet wide. This lot is 50 feet wide. And the minimum side yard should be reduced to seven and a half feet, provided that two side yards total at least four inches for every foot. Karen, you can look it up. It's on page 13455 in the code.
Okay. Okay, so that would basically then reduce our variance request.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so
Lauren just texted me that he lost his connection. So that's why
Okay.
Anyway, you should do the calculation, figure out if you got the, you know, you meet the code, but you probably do, and that would reduce your variance request.
Okay.
Longing to the good.
Yeah, it, it looks like we were, we would because as long as the total yard, so we, it would be 16 feet if total yards equal that, the four inches for each foot of lot width, so that would be 16 feet and we do have, you know, over, we have well over that, so. Okay, so then for the adjustment for the public hearing, I'll just make that amendment that our request would be less.
Yeah, you can change your chart, you know, on your chart. That should be simple enough.
Okay. Great, thank you for pointing that out.
Notes on the chart, you could note that you're going to small lot exception.
Okay. Excellent, thank you for pointing that out. Okay. So
What, oh, he'll see what he's saying here. He's texting me. I'll try to rejoin, okay. Well, it seems like, I mean, what does everybody feel like we could go ahead with this for a public hearing? Hello?
Looks good to me.
I don't see anything else.
Yeah, I think it's okay, so we could put it on for two weeks from, you know, it's August 6th, I think, is the is the, the next hearing date, Thursday, August 6th. Well, to the applicant?
That, that works for me. Is that good for you, Maria?
Thank you.
Okay. Great. Excellent, so I guess Aaron will send out the notice to me that I'll send to the neighbors?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, great, so is that something you need to vote on or are we just good to go on?
I can't remember. I don't think we have to vote.
I don't think we
Everybody agree we're okay with August 6th for this, for this public hearing?
Yeah, I don't think we vote on that, right?
Yeah, I don't think we do. Now, I'm telling Aaron that we're moving along and he says thanks, so. You'll make the change, you'll make the note, the changes on your application, the drawing form. And come to the hearing and, well, no, you'll zoom to the hearing and then we'll go from there.
Okay, excellent, thank you so much. Have a good night.
Good night.
All right, so make a motion to close the, our meeting?
I have a motion, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting. I can do it because I'm the chairman, I'm just one of the board. Make a motion to close the, close our, close our, our meeting.
I move that we close the meeting.
A second.
Okay, we got two seconds.
All right.
Laura seconded. All in favor, vote aye, aye.
Aye, all right.
All right, good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody, take care.